Five. Good afternoon. I would like to welcome everyone to our April twenty ninth, twenty twenty two virtual call meeting, an executive session. Today, we will have, we have myself, Vicki Turner as chair president, Mr. DeJohn DeCosta, vice chair, Ms. Anna Hill, Ms. Marsh, Mr. Marshall Orson, Mrs. Deirdre Pierce, Mrs. Allison Gaver, Dr. Joyce Morley, and our interim superintendent, Dr. Van Zandt Tinsley. Welcome, Dr. Tinsley. All right. All right. So we, we're gonna get to the business of why we called the meeting, and so we want to adjourn the meeting into executive session for the purposes of discussing permitted matters to dating personnel. It is requested that the DeKalb County Board of Education adjourn our meeting, April twenty ninth, called meeting to an executive session, for the purpose already stated. May I have a motion to adjourn to executive session? Dr. Morley, thank you. And a second, Ms. Hill. Thank you all in favor. Signify with raised hand, please. DeCosta, I can't see you. Marshall Orson, I can't see you. I guess that's not a raised hand. Okay. So Turner.
Yeah, I'm okay too. I just can't manipulate, manipulate this phone to give you a hand. It's Pierce.
Okay, so let me just make note of everything I got. I got Morley. Give it to me one more time, guys. If these not, uh, Williamson, catch it. Hill, DeCosta, and Pierce, and Turner. Those in opposition to this meeting, please signify with a raised hand. There you go. That's, um, Orson and Gaver. Motion passes. Five, two. Now we are adjourned to executive session. All right, thank you. Next, we have an item requiring action from our executive session. I'd like to call for a motion to approve the employment agreement between Dr. Van Zandt S. Tinsley as interim superintendent and the DeKalb County Board of Education. Now have a motion. Mr. DeCosta. Second. Dr. Morley. All in favor, please signify by raising your hand, please.
Excuse, excuse me, there, you haven't asked for discussion.
Question.
Okay, well, I do have it down that we will get discussed. Okay, we can do it right now, Mr. Orson. I'll have some with that. We'll come back and get the, um. Okay, we got the motion on. We've got the second. Now, can we have for discussion? Thank you. Raise your hand for discussion, Mr. Gaver.
Thank you. Um, I am opposed to this, not because of the person, but because I don't believe we should be paying two salaries to two people doing the same job. So I would encourage us to wait and do this at the appropriate time when we know about our expenses here. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gaver. Mr. Orson.
Again, thank you. Hello, Dr. Tinsley. Uh, my opposition comes from a number of reasons, but I'm gonna clarify that I will ultimately be voting to abstain on this. It's my belief that there's a substantial risk that the actions leading to and culminating in the meeting of April twenty six are illegal. We know that the Attorney General is investigating this matter. If, in fact, they conclude that it was illegal, then any actions taking, taken at that meeting would be invalid under state law. And any vote, I believe by, on my part, uh, would, could be interpreted as a ratification of the actions taken at that meeting. And so, in light of the fact that the Attorney General has now weighed in and is investigating this matter, and again, because I believe there's a substantial risk that the actions lead up to and including the meeting were illegal under Georgia law, I have no choice in this case but to abstain. Now, I would otherwise, including for the reasons cited by Ms. Gaver, oppose this motion, uh, because I believe that it would be inappropriate for us to be compensating two superintendents, and I think at this point, there is a reasonable argument that we already have a superintendent serving the school district.
Thank you very much, Mr. Orson. Dr. Morley.
Thank you. I think one of the greatest things that concerns me is how unethical and how we can go against a board policy when we want to and when we're not supposed to. We're supposed to always stand by board policy and be ethical. It's amazing how we find the illegalities, or what really gets me when board members uh, come against each other has been for the last few years to make things illegal, to go to the Attorney General, to get on Facebook and put derogatory things about other board members and about what's going on, process procedures and protocols. It wasn't illegal when the time came for Dr. uh, uh, Stephen Green's contract, and you had to pay two people, uh, because of the fact that he shouldn't have been hired at the time. It wasn't illegal when there was erroneous information put out to the public, there was a six-one vote to hire Dr. Rudy Crew, when it never happened, there was never a vote. When this man walked away with seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars and never foot, stepped foot on the school grounds. It wasn't illegal when, uh, 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 Mrs. Watson Harris, and I said it in a meeting back in twenty twenty, was called up by one board or two board members and agreements made, and a Zoom meeting was held on a Tuesday for three and a half hours, on a Thursday for three and a half hours, and she and Dr. Crew got contracts before it got a chance before, to go before the board, before the public. And the policy says, even the state says, that that contract is not supposed to be given until that vote, until that information is set before the public for fourteen days. Both of these people had contracts. And so it wasn't illegal to lie on other board members and get them implicated in lawsuits and have them be a part of those things and keep making it difficult for the children of DeKalb County to get what they need to do. It wasn't illegal to keep going on and allowing our children to be suffering and for deals to be made and things to be going on that were not at the benefit of our children. At some point, this stuff has to stop between this board and the people who wanna have things their way and not look at what's in the best interest of the children. I'm not here for the gratification of Dr. Joyce Morley. I'm not on this board for helping myself to get wherever I wanna get to. But when it comes down to when we have our way, then we, it can go. But when we don't have our way, there's something wrong with it. It wasn't illegal, with so many other things that I can think of that have been illegal that have taken place and that have been brought to the public and nothing wasn't done. But we can talk about what is illegal when we have someone who says that a, a board doesn't allow them to hire people. Wasn't illegal for some of the things that this board allowed to take place over the last year and a half, and knowing that they were taking place, and this board absolutely substantiated these things, didn't do anything about them, and allowed them to take place that the public didn't know anything about, to lie to the public and not let the public know the truths about what's been taking place. So we wanna talk about illegalities and the fact that we're constantly, this board is constantly making waves and going to people and, and seeing that things get done to bring in the state school superintendent. It wasn't illegal that there was a lie was told that the superintendent, Ms. Watson Harris, who's not the superintendent anymore, didn't know that her t- contract was terminated. And then, uh, that just thing that took place with Druid Hills, that all those things came up afterwards. At some point, the fighting has to stop. I've been on this board ten years, and I've only had two years of peace and solace of being able to do what we need to do, because certain factions and certain people wanna control everything, the rhetoric. If it wasn't illegal to interfere with the day-to-day operation by some board members in working with Ms. Watson Harris, with Dr. Green, was that not illegal? The law says that's not supposed to be done, but it was done. And so at some point, I wanna see our children learn. I don't have particularly the child in the district except the ninety-seven thousand that belong to other people. But at some point, the disrespect that has been shown and constantly being shown, that board members are willing to try to kill off each other. It wasn't illegal for people to lie to me two years ago and said, I said white when I said white. It wasn't illegal to have me named in a lawsuit with Dr. Rudy Crew when they knew it wasn't true. It wasn't illegal for me to be told by board members how much I'm hated. It wasn't illegal for the same board members who keep stuff going on all the time to have me implicated in things that weren't true, to have people in the community. It wasn't illegal for board members to be behind someone in the community, excuse expression, calling me as a board member, a. It wasn't illegal for board members to tell me that I'm attacking other board members. It wasn't illegal for board members, same board members who are supposed to be serving children, to say that I must have gotten my degree from an HBCU. At some point, we've got to stop this mess. And because we can't have our ways, we create ways and go to different factions, our friends and people that we know in high places. But where are we? Where are the people during the school year? Where are the people that are asking questions? What happened? Why are we here? And every board meeting since I've been on this board, I've been true and honest and factual, and no one asks a question. When I said two years ago that this is not the person that we need to have as our superintendent, and no one listened. It wasn't illegal to keep leaving me out of, uh, 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 decisions and excluding me and the lack of equity to not to be there with me. So I can go on and on and on about the illegalities and the things that violated policy between certain board members. It wasn't illegal for me to have to go through ad hominem attacks over and over again. At some point, we've got to stop it. And then to have people in the public making decisions and they're not asking questions and nobody really know what's going on, because we have a couple of board members going out there proliferating stuff that is not accurate and not true. I think that some point, I'd like to see us maybe move on and do the charge that we are here to do, and that's a lead, and to be able to be a representative for the people in DeKalb County and for the children of DeKalb County. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Morley. I thought I saw Ms. Pierce's hand. I just wanna make sure I didn't miss it. It's down now.
No, it was by mistake. I think it was just the phone itself.
Okay, I saw Ms. A, Ms. Hill.
No, ma'am, I don't have my hand up right now. I think Mr. Orson maybe does.
Mr. Orson, please. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm, I'm just gonna really touch on one thing that, uh, from Dr. Morley is that she referenced about presenting and having a contract signed by a superintendent in advance of the board having approved it, which appears to be the case, uh, in this current matter. If I saw correctly, there is a signature from Dr. Tinsley on the proposed contract. So just wanna make sure that the, the, the procedures and processes we are following are consistent and the criticisms of those procedures and processes are consistent. But I, I do believe that there is a, uh, one party has signed that contract, and that is Dr. Tinsley. I will say as a matter of law, I think that's fine as it was in previous iterations, but it should be noted that this is the same case here.
Thank you, Mr. Orson. That Duke Education is fan off for you, I can see it. Thank you. All right. Um, I want Mr. Uh, Ms. Hill.
And I have something after Ms. Hill, please.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, I wanted to make a motion to amend. I'd like to make a motion to amend to include in this vote a ratification of the termination of Ms. Watson Harris's contract at the April twenty sixth meeting.
Okay. We, we, we need a second on that. Mr. Doyle, yes. Can we get a second on that? So speak your motion again, Ms. uh, Hill, one more time.
A motion to amend, and I'd like to include in this vote a ratification of the termination of Ms. Watson Harris's contract at the April twenty sixth meeting.
I got some Dr. Morley's hand. Okay. They're properly second by Dr. Morley. And now call for vote.
I got a subject to discussion.
You have discussion, Madam Chair.
I'm sorry.
Discussion of the amendment.
I wonder is that intentional? I'm sorry, Mr. Orson, I really is. Mr. Orson, is that what you got? Discussion. Can't hear you. Can't hear you, Mr. Orson.
I think Ms. Gaver had her hand up first.
Ms. Gaver.
Uh, thank you. I'm just curious, um, I, as far as I know, I haven't seen, I know something went out that there was, uh, a press release or something, that there was a severance agreement. I haven't seen that. I, I don't know anything about the terms of the termination. I don't know anything about that, so I'm not sure what this request to ratify actually is.
Mr. Doyle.
Sure. Uh, my interpretation would be that Mrs. Hill's motion is ratifying the action of the board in the public meeting portion of, uh, the April twenty sixth meeting. I'm not aware of any agreement either. Um, I'm aware of the board's motion to terminate under paragraph nine E three, I think was the, was the, uh, provision of the contract.
May I make a point of order, uh, Ms. Gaver? Uh, Mr. Doyle, under Georgia law, are you allowed to combine two disparate actions in the same motion? I think there's a question under Georgia law as to whether you're allowed to do that or whether you have to vote on them separately.
I, I think these can be wrapped in. They both relate to the same topic of the su- superintendent and the position of superintendent and who serves as the superintendent.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right. Seeing none, we have a motion.
I, I, no, I made a point of order. I didn't have my discussion.
Okay. Well, go on, I was asking you to.
Yeah, yeah, well, I'm sorry, you.
I did, yeah.
You know, I, um, we, we, we are now, just to make sure I understand where we are procedurally, we are related to the motion made by Ms. Hill to ratify the action of, um, the board on the twenty sixth concerning the status of Superintendent Watson Harris. I think there are both substantive and procedural issues here. Procedurally, I question whether this was then properly noticed, uh, which is a problem that predates this meeting. The, the fact that we have wide, wide-ranging language in the notice doesn't mean that you can just then discuss anything at a meeting. And I think there are a line of Georgia cases that say that you can't simply use that as a cover. We weren't provided any notice that one of the things that would be here would concern the, the alleged termination of Superintendent Watson Harris. So I think it is problematic whether that motion could even be considered at this. Further say, though, on the substance of it, just so I'm clear for the record, that I would strongly oppose that. Uh, I believe that there's no rational basis for the termination of Superintendent Watson Harris. I think she has served this district admirably and in a way that is to the benefit of the students of DeKalb County and to the benefit of DeKalb County. And I think any effort to replace her would be a tragic mistake, uh, for our students and for our county, and certainly also not in line with, appears to be very strong public sentiment in support of her continuing as a superintendent. I think we are placing ourselves in a position of jeopardy on many fronts, uh, both in terms of investigations that will take place regarding this board and its actions, but more substantively and far more importantly, in terms of how we best serve children outcomes. She is one of the finest instructional leaders and not the best I have ever come across. We have seen really substantial progress, particularly with getting our principals who are, you know, right on the front lines of understanding her vision of what needed to be done and growing in the same direction to ensure that we're going to improve outcomes for children. But I've never seen that kind of buy-in or that some kind of support in any previous iteration in terms of leadership in this district.
Thank you, Mr. Morley.
No, I.
I'm sorry.
Uh, you know, when I'm finished. Uh, and, and, and that, that is both tragic and a terrible mistake. Terrible mistake before we get into any of the other things about we're paying multiple superintendents and any of that, but this is the person who can lead us to the place we need to be in terms of getting great outcomes for our students. I think we are gonna be horrifically challenged in trying to find a new permanent superintendent in an environment in which third of the twenty-five largest districts in the country are looking for a new superintendent, in which superintendents are leaving the profession in droves because the external conditions are really terrible, quite frankly, to be a superintendent. Uh, but even putting that aside, I come back to the qualities and qualifications of Superintendent Watson Harris, and this would be terrible mistake if we were to terminate her services and not continue to have her serve as the superintendent of DeKalb County.
Thank you, Mr. Orson. Am I correct that you're done? Thank you. Uh, thank you for your comments.
Uh, um, Mrs. Turner.
Hold on. Okay. I got, okay, Dr. Morley, and, uh, then Ms. Pierce, please.
So I just wanna signify and, and say that at some point, a board has to be adult and the members of a board immature enough. I'm the only educator that's on this board, forty-seven years, every grade level, post-secondary, some have worked in other capacity, but I'm an educator, serve on national boards, local boards, and as a leader, an executive coach, and I work with people and helping them as a leader. It takes strong leaders, and that we have to get to a point where board members are mature enough that when they can't have their way, they don't throw tantrums and they don't get upset, and they don't go and upset the apple cart, and to destroy an entire system and destroy a board and destroy the students and destroy a school district. Um, this, uh, Mr. Orson talked about, you know, not having information. There are so many times I remember being in, in, uh, meetings and meetings being called by this board, and, and even when Mr. Orson was chair, didn't know what was going on, never was told, no discussion being held with me. Does it make it right? No, it doesn't. And that is not factual as to not knowing the information of what's going on, making decisions that aren't pertinent to the actual benefit and overall benefit of the students and the children of DeKalb County. Rudolph Crew's, uh, contract was signed by he and the, the district. Uh, that's why he was able to be successful in what he was doing. And when we make rash decisions, I begged this board two years ago to reopen the co- open the, the search for a, um, uh, superintendent after the situation that the board, some of the board members created with the lie about a six-one vote for, uh, Dr. Crew and implicated other board members that in, uh, eventually, uh, resulted in a lawsuit and other accusations that were not accurate. I begged the board to reopen it. I begged the board to also look at leaders within the district. And I remember when the search form itself said, why would you go back and pick up your dirty, dirty throwaways, exact words, and I have it documented, and make this person superintendent? No one listened. Uh, they were doing what they want. I am an educator, I've been a part, and the criteria and the qualifications. I'm not here to bash Ms. Watson Harris, and I would never do that. She was not qualified then, she never was. Anytime you have someone, and I said to you all then, we're here to educate children and not educate superintendents. We should not have to train someone in order to be able to get to the point of where they need to be. They should already be qualified. We are models and role models for the way children in education should be. When you have low morale, we've had three suicides, and I've said it to this board, and not one time has this board ever discussed the suicides of our adults in this district. The morale is so low that it's through the floor. I've had three people within the last couple of months that called to say, I'm gonna re- I'm gonna resign. I can't take it anymore. Our administrative assistants, our secretaries, when people are lambasted, are blasted, they 'll yell, they'll scream, they'll call on the carpet, threaten, and you tell me that's the way a leadership should be? And, and, and having that ability, someone who's never worked in an administrative capacity within a school except being middle, elementary school principal, having never done any of that before, never been and handled a budget that has never been handled before, a person who basically is saying that I've never known what a zero-based budget is because a board member decides that's what's supposed to be, when the board members are constantly interfering in the day-to-day operations and leading it. And so we behoove people that if, if you're doing what I want you to do and doing what I say for you to do, then I'm for you, but when you're not, then I'm not for you. And so we make decisions based on, not for the children, but for the personal gratification and the personal gains of certain board members, and it's been that way. When queer quote quote becomes the norm, not the exception, something is wrong with that picture. And we did not have, we've, the last superintendent that we had taken us in the direction was Mr. Thurman, and well, before, after that, Ms. Tyson, and I begged you all to even give Ms. Tyson a contract, and you refused to do it, because it seems as if we don't want success for this district. We want to have things our way and the way we want things to go, so to look good to the public, and those are the words that are said on this board too often, look good to the public. I will never deceive the public. I would never deceive our children. I would never deceive myself. I'm a taxpayer also. We don't deal with the shortfalls, the, the misappropriation of funds. We don't have it had a COO. We haven't had a C eight, uh, 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 C, uh, chief of HR. We haven't had appropriate people because the people that have been bought before are inferior. When you have someone to be the chief of HR, and they have never been in, 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 in HR in seven years, they're in other capacities, when you don't tell the board the truth about someone you bring before them, as the superintendent did, and then we find out that that person worked for her before. Come on, things wrong, and you all knew it, and you substantuated, and you put your hands on it. The disrespect that I was shown the whole time that I was been on this board between that, because this board, you allowed it to take place. When you bring people before the board to put in positions that are not qualified, when you want someone to be in finance and they have a law degree, when you have someone, you bring resumes before a board to be able to ratify them for employment, and they're, they're, there's fraught with errors, grammatical, structural errors, back and forth. Come on, at some point, we've got to stop going along just to get along and going with people because we like them and they don't like them. I said to you all over and over, and I mean it, I don't have to be like, but I'm gonna stand for what's right, R.I.G.H.T., no matter what color people are. And we're at a point, and we were there, and to say that this woman didn't know, she knew three weeks before the Druid Hills incident take place, the Druid Hills incident emanated. And what gets me is that the public, no one is asking the questions of the people who are here going through this every day. When you get to a point, you have a board men- meeting three and four times a week, something is wrong with that picture. I've been on this board ten years, national, local boards, state board, and never have I seen what board meetings have to take place, because then it came to the question, the question I would always ask, who runs this district? Who runs the, the, the superintendent? We had board members interfere with that, and then when you came down to it, the superintendent dictated to certain board members and what she wanted, and you all allowed it to take place. That's not the way it's supposed to operate. There was never a transition plan, a succession plan, and I sent emails to that effect. Information that was erroneously told, can't get information when it's supposed to be, money overspent. If you have to cut a superintendent's, uh, spending power from a hundred thousand to fifty thousand, that tells you something that's wrong right there. Overspending, not being honest and open, going back and forth, breeding, the, it, division amongst board, board members, and, and some of you bought into it. And I don't care what anybody says. I'm here for the children, I've always been. That's why I've been in education that long. I don't care where a child comes from, the north, south, east, west, or south, the black, white, green, brown, indigenous, poor, rich. I have an obligation, and not just as a board member, because if something happens to one of your children, it may affect my grandchildren. And so we've got to get beyond this mess. And when you got board members fighting against itself and fighting against the people that get it wrong and putting stuff out there in the community, it's been over and over on this board, and the last few years have gotten to a point where it's just unmanageable. And at some point, I hope the public will begin to look at, there needs to be criteria stipulations for the people that you hire superintendents and have something to say. I said it publicly two years ago, that Ms. Watson Harris was not the right person. I didn't take this lightly. I did my research. You all called up on a Friday, said and interviewed on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, never met her before. Who hires somebody on Zoom and give them a package of almost four hundred thousand dollars? Doesn't work that way. I'm gonna yield, and, and, and I know other people want to speak, but I'm just sick and tired of how we, the people take, the same way they're banning books, the same way they're going against LGBTQ, the same way they're going against blacks, they're going against brown. This is a part of a takeover, of to see that public education is not right, and nobody would stand up and say, when do we stop it? People are dying every day, killing off people. Dr. Hall died, other people in other districts because of the lies that are being told on people, hurting people's lives, because you are selfish, you want this, you want that. It's all about the children. And what gets me, they were scholars until the last board meeting, then we were a failing school system. I resent ever this district ever being called failure, because when you call it a failing school system, you say the children are failures, the parents are failures, the teachers, the educators, the county, everybody's a failure, the county is a failure. But it's amazing, when things are not going our way, how we can turn on a dime and we can say the things that are just derogatory, negative and nasty. I'd like to see the community be a part during the school year and ask questions, can we help you? Come into the schools, come into the board meetings. But everybody's making decisions and making statements and turning their backs on people now, and they don't even have the full story. If you want to know, you should have asked, because there is a full story. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Morley. Ms. Pierce and then Ms. Gaver.
Yes, uh, thank you, Board Chair. Um, I, just one thing, I just wanna make a, a point for my own personal, uh, injection is that what I would have liked to have seen is that the concerns and challenges that board members we all have had with, with Mrs. Watson Harris, I would have liked to have seen all of us come together, because there's two sides to every story. It would have been a good thing to have that person in the midst of us so that we could have brought all these concerns out and see what her responses are, and then make a decision. I'm gonna put a period there. Now, the other part, I would like to ask Mr. Doyle to please, if you would reiterate what you said about combining these two, uh, proposals, these two, the, the, uh, motion that Ms. Hill made in addition to what was already proposed, can you kind of clarify that for me, please?
Sure. Thank you, Ms. Pierce.
Sure, thank you, Ms. Pierce. I am taking the position that it's proper to vote on this amendment and if the amendment passes to vote on these items, if that's what the board wishes to do. There's, um, the matter of the question that's been raised about whether the action was proper or legally enforceable. And so if the board ratifies this, it'll make clear that that separation termination decision is being ratified and in the same motion, the contract of the interim superintendent position is being approved.
All right, thank you very much.
Ms. Gavert?
Thank you. I just, I can't understand why we would be asked to ratify something that we've been told might be illegal, that we know the time of that meeting on Tuesday was shifted so that board members with conflicts could not participate, there was a plea for all seven of us to participate, there's evidence that there were board members working independently to ask Dr. Tensley to be interim superintendent the day before the meeting ever happened. And there's so much that calls into question the decision Tuesday night that I, I can't imagine how we would be ratifying that at this point. And that's, that's setting aside what we've heard from literally national leaders, Congress people, we've heard from the governor of our state, we've heard from our legislators, our mayors, our commissioners, we've heard from the public, there are petitions out there. I've heard from students, a fourth grader yesterday questioned our judgment on, on firing the superintendent. I mean, everyone is questioning this, so why would we ratify this? I, I find it baffling that we would do that. And I, in fact, would like to amend the amendment to change, uh, the language of ratify the termination to reinstate Cheryl Watson Harris.
Okay, Dr. Morley's hand is up and then Mr. Doyle, why?
Well, Madam Chair, I guess we have a motion, is that right, Ms. Gavert?
Yes, I made a motion, so I'd like to-
And then we would now see if there's a second for the motion.
Second.
Okay.
And now you can have discussion on Ms. Gavert's motion and we'll get back to Dr. Morley, who, uh, would have questions on Ms. Hill's amendment. But for now, does anyone have any questions on Ms. Gavert's motion to amend?
I don't have a question, I have a statement that I most certainly think is utterly ludicrous and it's been the constant way, uh, ever for the last, I would say, four or five years, we go through the same thing when certain people can't have their way and it's constant over and over again. And it's agreeing with certain people, a certain board member and not with others, not looking at what's right and doing what's right. R I G H T, but doing what's in the best interest. And this constant back and forth because they can't have their way and they don't want to agree with certain people who are saying it instead of saying, we're gonna dock in the face, do whatever, put the face in shadows, remove the name. But are we doing the right thing? And this board has not matured to the point where it's doing the R I G H T, right thing. So no one will mistake of what I'm saying, what I'm speaking and do what's best interest of the children.
Thank you, Dr. Morley. Mr. Orson?
Yes, I fully support Ms. Gavert's motion. I think it's actually a, a way out of a large part of the mess that has been created. You know, she, Superintendent Watson Harris is the right person to lead this system. You know, I, you know, as they say in some of the games, we perhaps had a footfall on Tuesday, you know, caught up in the moment or otherwise. But, uh, you know, this is a pathway to get us back on track. Uh, and I think a lot of people are looking at us with great scrutiny and wondering whether we're going to make the right decision. I think the strong sentiment in terms of Superintendent Watson Harris continuing to be our superintendent and we are seeing the repercussions in every quarter of the county and from state government, from having made a precipitous decision that is harmful to the district, is harmful to our children and is harmful to the Cab County. So I strongly, strongly support Ms. Gavert's proposed amendment.
Okay, thank you. I'd just like to, um, I guess I get an opportunity to weigh in and then Mr. Doyle, I'd like you to get us back on track.
I still did not have a chance to finish with, with what I was saying related to Ms. Hill.
I'm coming back to you, Dr. Morley.
And Ms. Turner, could, could we do this? Could, I think people might be through a discussion of Ms. Gavert's motion, which takes us back down to Ms. Hill's. Um, so I offer that for your consideration to, to just keep it moving.
I know, we got two, we got two motions on the floor.
Yes, ma'am.
The discussion for Ms. Gavert's is a motion, right? Okay. And Mr. Orson just made the point, I think, Dr. Morley, and I'd like to make a point if I can. Uh, I just want to put something out for, because we put a lot of information out. I don't know if we put out that the Flex Academy has a forty-nine percent failure rate, that we have had violence at an all-time high in our schools and weapons are at an all-time high. I don't know that we have looked at fairly at, uh, the teacher's contract was a major debacle with our assistant principals and principals, where we were plagued with calls and, and, and weeping, thinking that they were losing their pay. I don't know that we, we even addressed that, we've got some challenges, but I'm just saying to revert back to the old because it's preferred, our school choice program has been a debacle. We've had, um, violation in our hiring practices and elevating people and giving raises to people and promotion to people without, um, bringing it before the board. And then the last thing I'll mention is our bonuses were given out. Bonuses were given out without the proper signage. Bonus was, were given out without the proper compliance with our, we've got things and, and I don't want to revert back to the old. And while I respect the motion that was put on the floor, I, I think that it would be, uh, if we wanted to, we want to go to a new level, then we have to make new changes. And so I applaud the opportunity to make the changes. While everybody may not understand behind the scenes, we've had an up close and personal view of some of the, the challenges. And I'll say that I, I've had discussions with, uh, Mrs. Watson Harris. More, oh, more, too many to count, but I can't go back and, and document them for anybody that wants to know. And so, uh, I've had, and, and many board members have come and had that discussion. So I'm, I'm just disappointed that we're here. But, um, I wanted to put that out in terms of the reinstatement that was on the floor, Mr. Doyle. And so I think we have some other, um, we have, uh, Mr. DeCosta's up, Dr. Morley, no, Dr. Morley is up, Mr. DeCosta and then Ms. Gavert.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Pierce, I want to say that, and, and I, I just was sort of stunned here when you made your statement, you know, I have respect for you and I try to respect everyone. I have sent this board email after email after email after email. I filed complaints. Mr. Orson denied me dealing with him, the chairs, the vice chair, and every email I sent. And when I sent an email three months ago and said, we need to look at the superintendent's contract, because she's making a decision about everybody else. Ms. Anna Hill was the only one responded. We've had this woman insubordinate. I sent you all an email last week where she refused to meet with Mrs. Turner to discuss the Druid Hills information. And basically said, you didn't meet with me, I'm not meeting with you. Good luck on your presentation. We had one of you came back and said, Happy Easter, somebody else wanted to go to, tip toe to the tulips. And I said, how do you look at this insubordination? And no one said a word. Email after email, what I have sent to you all, you all have ignored every complaint, every concern I had, that whole thing about a zero-based budget, she told you all she never did one. When she tried to redistrict the school, bought it before because a board member wanted to redistrict the school with clusters and it was never discussed with the board. Even after she was denied a non-qualified person to be HR chief in March, she bought it back before the board in April. We know all this, bonuses all over the place. And every time I've sent you all something and I've said to you all, oh, I guess I don't matter, every complaint that I've had, and I'm gonna fight, excuse my expression, but I got to say this, like hell, these executive sessions need to be recorded because there's so much goes on in those executive sessions, then y'all come back out to the public and you pretend it's a whole different thing. And that's where a lot of that stuff goes down. And we've had board members to help this woman, to be disrespectful to me and other people, to bring forth erroneous information. And it's okay. But I guess when you make deals ahead of time, you got to hold it together. And we also have to begin to look at the hundreds of consultants coming in, being paid, brought that to your attention. And this, we haven't even seen the list of people who've got bonuses and stipends, putting somebody in HR, knowing they're not qualified to be a chief, doing all these things. And it's okay. And I asked the same question I asked back then, would you have somebody to come and be leading your children, leading you, and you know they're not qualified? You all knew that from the beginning. But you would never admit and say, you want somebody to admit, they say they made a mistake by firing her, admit it made a mistake that you all made about hiring her. And that's where it needs to go back to. But I think at some point, the public is gonna have to get to where they decide who, what constitute board members and some criteria. And to handle a $2.4 billion budget and just let money just roll out the door, roll out the door. Events, massive spending, when you go across the street and spend hundreds of thousands to go on a podium and speak when you could have used the parking lot over at the district. And as Ms. Turner said, the Flex Academy, and then everybody is to blame. People, a woman dies, didn't get a health insurance, didn't get a life insurance in because of mistakes are constantly being made. No corrections. Don't ever say that had you all known, I got email after email I sent to you all and you all totally disavowed me. It made it seem to the public that that was a problem. And yes, the, the, the governing everybody's in because we got two board members that are going out there making it be so that the governing everybody would be involved. Need to have some shame. Is there no conscience here? What I've had to do on this board, I should be the one. And I've done everything I could, not to go to Cognia, not to go to anybody. I've been treated like, excuse the president, crap on this board, disrespected and allowed to happen, called names, saying I'm attacked as a black woman. And nothing was done. And Ms. Watson Harris was supposed to make sure, when I was called, when I was asked out there, she would never would give Chief Gobel permission to go ahead and do what he's supposed to do. You all allowed this woman to have a $600 a month car allowance and have an armed security guard taking her around. You all allowed her to have her children, along with her deputy superintendent, dropped off at school and picked up by security. You all knew that wasn't legal. And I brought it to your attention, you wouldn't say anything. When people were promoted and the board didn't know, given raises and the board didn't know. Last May, when I brought it to public attention and said, how are these people being promoted? How do they get these different titles? And you all said absolutely nothing because it came from Dr. Joyce Morley. Because remember, I was told how much I've been hated since I've been on this board. And then when it came time for an investigation, the person was right there in the room, Ms. Gavert wouldn't say a word. My life has been in danger, I've been threatened. And Ms. Watson Harris was supposed to make sure that security did whatever, she never gave Chief Gobel the authority to do what was necessary. Yelling and screaming at, 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 at individuals, retaliation, vindictiveness. When people don't say or do what she wanted to say or do, or she thought they invited me to a, a counselor's meeting, grilled and railed from one side to the other. Not speaking to people, not talking to people. And you all want to tell me this is what we want in a leader? This is who we want? I have no second thought. I have no second thought. And I tried and I would always say to her, I'm here for you. If she failed, we all would fail, the children would fail the most. And I would always say to her, I'm here to help you. You have a person that doesn't listen. You can't have a leader on their own program. You can't have a leader that tell board members and they tell each other what to do and they all in it together. That's not the way you do it. I have no question and I have no second thought about the way I have voted.
Thank you, Dr. Morley. Ms. Gavert?
Thank you. Um, I just, I just would like to point out, just because, just because a board member says something does not mean it's true. I just want to be clear to the people listening that some of, some of the complaints that I'm hearing, we've all been told are not true and we're, some of us are continuing to perpetuate. This idea that, um, that we've had this huge increase in, in, in fighting and weapons and all in our, in our schools is false. We've been told that's false. We had our public safety department present to us at our board retreat and we saw the statistics over the last seven years. And we know we're actually lower than we have been in the past in, in what's happening in our schools. The Flex Academy, we, we know what went wrong with Flex Academy, we know it was overwhelmed from the pandemic and we spent a whole session at the retreat talking about the changes we're making in the Flex Academy. So I, I do feel like, also I guess the school choice, we know that there was a problem with the vendor we use for school choice, we changed the vendor. And these are, some of these messages that keep circulating, we all know it's not true and some of us continue to perpetuate, which is troubling. And if that's, I mean, again, if that's the reason for this, it's wrong. I think we need to get back to the, the progress of our students, the climate in our schools, how our principals feel. Our principals have told us that they feel heard and respected for the first time. They told the Cognia team that they felt like they were being treated as instructional leaders and that the, the innovations that they wanted for their schools were valued by the superintendent. We have an objective measure. We have a whole team of, of previous superintendents, previous board members, college professors that came in with Cognia, visited thirty schools, assessed all of our student data, talked to our teachers, our parents, our administrators and every single board member. And of that objective assessment, they gave us high marks for our zero-based budgeting, for our accountability measures that we've put in place, for how we're, how we're listening to our teachers and meeting their needs in the classrooms. We had students who said, I, and I think this is significant, given the mental health concerns, I have someone that I can go to for help in my school. Our students told us that. That was a goal of our superintendent coming out of the pandemic. She told us, our board at one of her superintendent's reports, that her personal goal for her was for every student in our district to have an adult in the building they could go to when they are in trouble. And they told Cognia that that was working. We have so much that she has put in place that is positive for our, for our district and yet we're, for some reason, held up on some of these stories that are false or have been corrected or we've gotten the correct information when there have been mistakes. I'm not saying there have never been mistakes, but we've gotten the correct information and yet we keep bringing it up. So I, I would, I would like for us to, to keep in mind that, I just want to, one quote from our Cognia, uh, report that we received, classroom observations, data and student performance data indicate that students are making gains in the Cab County. COVID gaps exist, but the system is working hard to address those gaps. And they go on to say, all of what we're doing to address our students' needs. So when we put students in the forefront of the conversation, there's no doubt we need to keep this superintendent, Cheryl Watson Harris.
Thank you, Ms. Gavert. I'd almost give you a, a, a round of applause because it's obvious you support your, your motion you put on the floor. Thank you. And I think the facts will be revealed in due season. I really do. We've ordered a full investigation, we're waiting on the report. And then I think we won't have to just, as you say, tell stories. And I, and also I just want to add, I thought I heard that maybe some of your postings might have implied that we were in jeopardy with the accreditation, but you corrected it and I thank you for correcting that and saying that that was not it, right? Did somebody misunderstood you about that? Was that what happened, Ms. Gavert?
Uh, what happened was people thought that because the governor and- Uh, what happened was people thought that because the governor and the state superintendent were all by the subset of the board's behavior, that that behavior was going to put us at accreditation risk.
Oh.
I put something out saying, we're not at accreditation risk. Our board is at risk because our credibility is at risk because of some of these shady things that have gone on.
Because of a lot of the lies that have been shared. You're right.
That's what I put out.
That's right. Because of lies. Okay. Now we got two motions on, on Mr. DeCosta.
Yes, ma'am. I thank you so much, Madam Chair. I do understand that we do have two motions on the floor and this has been a lot of conversation about this. And all I just want is for clarity for the public to explain to the public, you know, what is being ratified, what is taking place and why is it happening? And that's all.
So first, let me see if this, Mr. Mr. Boyd, I mean, I'm sorry, Mr. Doyle. Do we deal with the last motion put on the floor and then bring the clarity to the previous motion?
I, I think, uh, I would propose, Madam Chair, let me just explain what I think, uh, Mrs. Verz's motion does and then I'll let Mrs. Verz completely correct me if, uh, if she'd like. But this motion that has been, uh, discussed thoroughly, there's, it's been moved, it's been seconded, is to amend Mrs. Hill's motion. And so the bottom line is, Miss Verz would have the board in her motion reinstate uh, Ms. Watson Harris, which would, uh, by implication, uh, null and void this, uh, the interim superintendent contract as, as part of that motion. So, Miss Verz, if, I'll let you correct me, uh, if you like. But that was my sense. That was my interpretation of your motion.
Okay, so we have.
That's correct. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Verz has put a motion on the floor. I believe Mr. Orson gave a second. Now let's take a vote on Mrs. Verz's motion. All in favor of this motion presented by Miss Verz, please signify with a raised hand. Didn't want to miss anybody. That's Miss Verz and Mr. Orson. Thank you. Those in opposition of this motion, please signify with a raised hand. Okay. I don't want to leave Ms. Pierce. I don't want to leave you out.
Thank you. I'm an abstention, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay, so noted. And now Mr. Doyle will go back to the motion put on the floor by Ms. Hill. Am I correct, Mr. Doyle?
Yes, and, um, here I'll let Ms. Hill correct me.
Okay.
If she likes, but my interpretation was given concern about, um, or potential arguments that some have that the action may not have, uh, been sufficient from the termination of the contract on August 26th meeting, that the motion would be to add on, uh, a provision to the interim superintendent contract, or, or I should say uphold and ratify the decision that was made by the board on, uh, April 26th. And that, if, if that motion passes, uh, then that would be merged in with the approval of the interim superintendent contract.
Yeah, you explained it better than I did. Thank you.
All right. And I do believe that we had a, um, Ms. Hill put that motion on the floor and Dr. Morley, I believe, uh, gave that second. Now, all in favor of that motion presented by Ms. Hill for the ratification, please signify with a raised hand.
Hold on, I'm sorry. I still want some clarity right quick.
Okay.
I still want some clarity right quick. Um.
Okay.
Okay, so we're doing this because we're clarifying the fact that there was, um, um, allegations that we were hosting or holding a illegal, um, um, meeting, correct? Um, okay, right. So now we're bringing it back to the table to, um, to, to say that, what? We're not holding a legal meeting, so this is the vote that counts right here. Is that what we're saying?
Yes, it would just simply verify the termination that the board did on, uh, on Tuesday.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, is that clear for you, mister?
Yes, yes, that's clear.
Okay, I saw Mr. Orson's hand go up.
Yes, and so I want to clarify that I think, uh, that this can either correct any defects, I believe under Georgia law, and that in fact, this motion would not have been properly noticed. And so in itself would then add to the list of defects that I think exist and could be deemed illegal by the Attorney General's Office.
And, um, can, can I ask a question on that? Um, Mr. Doyle, so if this was an amendment, how is this illegal?
Well, I think Mr. Orson is just, well, I don't really want to put, I'll let Mr. Orson speak for himself. He, but, but, uh, he, he took the position, um, that this, there should have been more specificity on the agenda, I guess I could say. That, that's what he's.
Right, but, um, to my knowledge, and help me out with this, right? Because Ms. Allison Verz amended something to amend, um, you know, what was properly amended. So why wasn't that considered in the, um, the argument with, from Mr. Orson? I'm just trying to get, I'm just trying to get some clarity, right? Because Mr. Orson is saying illegal meeting, right? But we have amended something that is brought to us by a board, right? Which won't be on a agenda, correct? Are, are you following me? I'm just, I'm just trying to get this clarity so that I can understand to make a, you know, a sound decision. Claire?
I can't speak to, I guess, the issue. I don't know how to answer your question. I can stick to the legalities here. And I can just say what Miss Verz's motion, uh, involved. Was that motion noticed? No. Uh, was Ms. Hill's motion specifically noticed? No. That's, that's as good an answer as I can give on, on the legalities. I take the position that, uh, meeting has been proper under Georgia law.
The first meeting?
Uh, both, I take the position in both meetings.
Was, right, correct. So, okay.
Can I say something? Basically, what we're doing is ratifying what has already been done and what has already been said. And we're just ratifying it again today.
Are we ready, ready to take a vote? We've had our discussion on the motion put forth by Ms. Hill and properly seconded by Dr. Morley. Please signify if you are in agreement with this, in favor of this, please signify with a raised hand. All right. Those in opposition? Okay, so, any abstention?
I'm an abstention, Madam Chair. This is Ms. Pierce.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Motion passes. All right. Well, thank now. I tell you, we've had such a robust discussion among the board and, uh, and hopefully it's been for benefit. Um, we have come together now out of executive session for the purposes of taking a public vote on the contract for our interim superintendent, Dr. Van Zandt Tinsley. And so may I have a motion? Mr. DeCosta? A second, please.
And Madam Chair, this would be a motion to approve the contract. Um, and also add the provision that would, had been added by the amendment proposed by Ms. Hill, correct?
Make a point of order, please.
Can you hold on one second?
I guess my question.
What he's saying, please, Mr. Orson? Just a moment, please. Doyle?
I want to make sure we didn't already make a motion in a second on that. I just.
Can you wait, Mr. Orson? I know you want to be right. Just give us a minute. Mr. Doyle?
We kind of run ourselves, ran ourselves through the ringers and we went up the ladder two steps for Mrs. Hill's motion and Miss Verz's motion. But I think to get there, I just can't remember who made the first motion and the second. But I, I think we would have had a motion and a second already. Uh, and if I'm right about that, I'm seeing some nods.
On the contract itself?
Yes, ma'am. And so if, if that's right, then we nearly have to vote, Madam Chair.
So we have went through the discussion and that's what kind of took us off the rails a little bit. Okay. Now can we have a, a, a vote to accept the contract for our interim superintendent, Dr. Van Zandt Tinsley? All in favor of accepting the contract for our interim superintendent, Van Zandt Tinsley, please signify with a raised hand. Those who oppose? Thank you. And abstention?
Ms. Pierce, abstains, please.
I have it. Motion passes. Thank you. All right. Now, um, congratulations, Dr. Tinsley. Um, thank you for saying yes to, um, to our school, our students, staff and families in DeKalb. We appreciate, um, your willingness to serve despite, um, some of the challenges that you came into midst of. Thank you so much. We have utmost confidence in your ability to serve and provide. And hopefully you can separate some of the things that have gone out today with, the truth is, you're the right woman for the hour and we appreciate it. I know you have some things that you want to share with us and with the general public and I'd like to offer you that opportunity.
Thank you very much, Madam Board Chair Turner, Vice Board Chair DeCosta, members of the board and the community at large. Just thank you for this opportunity. I, I am elated to be back. Um, although I, uh, did have a brief time away during retirement, I can think of no better place that I would like to be to help, to make a change. And so, um, I wanted to share briefly the things that I'll be focusing on in my first 30 days. Because I think that's important. Um, I want you to know that I'm going to focus on our emergency issues. First and foremost would be our facilities. Uh, across the district, we have facilities that need attention. And so I want you to know that I've already started, um, in some analysis, through some visits through some of our schools. I needed to see for myself. I heard a lot. I've been told a lot, but I wanted to go out and see for myself what these conditions look like. So I have visited, uh, started with Druid Hills High School. And we'll just lift up a few names of other schools that I plan to look at as well. Um, McNair High School, Cross Keys High School, as well as a few others very soon. I've also started meeting with our COO, Mr. Richard Boy, to discuss our plan of action to see how we can start attacking some of the issues that we're seeing in our schools. Um, we're going to develop a task list and the task list, which I guess you would say, uh, would be our plan of action. We'll identify those areas that we need to address. We'll also identify responsible parties and the timelines for completion. Please know that we are not going to be able to do everything overnight, but there are some emergency things that we have to get done. And so that is my commitment, that we will start with those things first and then continue to work that list. Because at the end of the day, all of our students deserve to have a conducive learning environment. The next thing I want to look at is our finance area. And I think it's very important, you know, as we are focusing on the importance of our students in our school. And I think we have to keep that at the forefront of everything that we do. Everything that we do is for our students. So, um, I am going to, and have already started, examining the current budget to look at where we are with this budget that we're operating in now and using that information to help as we begin to develop the upcoming budget. So that we can figure out those priority areas and where we need to put our funds to make sure that we are doing what we need to do in best effort to support our students. Because again, remember, they are important and that's why we're here. Secondly, I can't leave this section without talking about the CARES Act funding. Heard a lot about the CARES Act. I've heard a lot about things that supposedly taking place. I don't know. I'm still in the process of examining. But what I will tell you is I am going to look at the funds that the district has received, look at the funds that have been expended and then look at what's left and what's available. So that we can make sure that anything that has not been expended can be put forth to best support our students. And I have to put a plug in here to say that we have to make sure that we're not only supporting the students, but our schools as a whole. So we need to make sure that we're talking about our school staff and we're talking about the buildings and we're talking about those things that our students need to be successful. So I just wanted to add that piece. Also, I can't, uh, leave finance without talking about human resources. So we've got to focus in on human resources with a laser lens. We've got to make sure we got the right people working with our students. We want qualified persons, trained people. Now, I know that that means that we have to go out and we have to have an aggressive recruitment strategy. But as well as recruitment, we've got to have a retention strategy. And I think it's very important that not only we look at bringing people into DeKalb, but how do we keep them? We want people to stay in DeKalb. We want to support them. So I do plan to work with our HR team to look at what we're doing in employee relations. We need to make sure that we're supporting our staff with the needs that they may have, the basic needs. Things that will help them to not only want to stay in DeKalb, but will help to improve the morale of those persons working with our students and working in our schools on a daily basis. Now, we are coming off of, um, a little hiatus with COVID. And so we have had our students that have not been in school. They're back now. But we know that the community is still trying to figure out what's going on, what's happening with COVID. It's not done and gone. It's still there, right? So we need to make sure that we are supporting our students because we want to make sure they're thriving. We know that there may have been some loss. Um, I've heard about some things with the Flex Academy. I've heard about some other, uh, situations that we need to dig into. So working with our team, we're going to make sure that we have those solid summer learning opportunities to help boost our students. But also look at what we can do to provide that extra layer of support for students as well. They may have experienced some loss during that period of time that they were not physically in our buildings, under our grasp. We also are going to make sure that our school staff is equipped to work with our students. And what do I mean by that? Professionally, we have the best of the best right now. But what we also know is in order for our students to be successful, we've got to make sure that we can deal with some of the social, emotional needs of our students. So we need to make sure that our staff not only can work with our students and support them, but they have what they need to be their best selves when they come to work every day. So that's another piece that we've got to work on. We've got to work on that piece to make sure that our staff has what they need. And we're looking at that because that too leads to improving our morale. Now, lastly, we can't do it alone. And so we've got to have our tentacles out there in the community. We've got to make sure we bring partners to the table, continue. And I know we have them, but let's bring more. We need more people to help us with what we're doing to help our students. We have so many resources in DeKalb County. And we just have to make sure that we're reaching out to those persons, whether it be volunteers, whether it be mentors, whether it be partners coming in. You know, it's not always even about them giving us money. Maybe it's that, that coming into a building. Maybe it's, you know, working with a student, working with families or working with schools, adopting a school. You know, those are things that can help us help the morale, but also help us do the work that we need to do in our schools on a daily basis. I heard something earlier and I have to piggyback on this. Um, and I know we talked about a little, I heard earlier, it was mentioned about safety. And that's a big one for me. Um, prior to my leaving DeKalb, I worked with the Public Safety Department. But I know from watching the news every day, we've got something going on in our communities and we've got to figure out what's happening with our students. We've got our youth. We've got, I, I think I saw a situation or something that happened in the media where a, a student in DeKalb was, um, shot, I think at the, at the skating rink. And they found that it was a 13-year-old student that did it. And that, that's something that we have got to work with our community to figure out what's happening. You know, what does that mean? Is that a gang? Is it, are we looking at gangs? Are we looking at students that just need that extra reinforcement, parents that need support? So, working with family and community engagement and with other divisions in the school district, I really want us to look at how we can increase those supports. Because at the end of the day, it's all about our students being successful, but I want our students here so that they can be successful. And that's important. So, I said a lot here. Those are my top five. Um, there are others, but those are my top five. Um, I want the public to know, and, and you, of course, um, members of the board, that I will be compiling a 90-day plan. The 90-day plan will be prepared. And once it is completed, will be displayed for public viewing. The 90-day plan will be prepared and once it is completed, will be displayed for public viewing. So there will be transparency, so that you will know what we're working on and where we are faring with those things that we're working on as well. Again, I, I'm just excited, I'm energetic, I thank you for your vote of confidence. I'm ready, um, here, sleeves rolled up, as you see, rolled up. Um, I'm ready. Um, and let's just do the work. And if I can just say one thing, focus on our students, let's just get the work done.
Thank you, Dr. Tinsley, thank you very much. It's a pleasure to have your board. It's a pleasure to, um, focus on our children and that is our mission as board members and staff. So, I think we've covered everything that we came together to cover today. And, um, I do appreciate your time, I, I appreciate your commitment. Even when we, uh, may not agree on everything, but I believe that, uh, we are here for our children. If we can just stay focused on the bigger picture, our students and our commitment to keep them safe and in a positive learning environment. So I appreciate you. Have a wonderful weekend, board members. And, uh, we'll see you in the community. Our meeting is a job.